... Yeah, it's actually one of the things that we're gonna do is first pitch on the planning board for for the term of the year. But occasionally we also go into various houses and ask them, and I do a question. And they may have an answer.
Okay, no, we're doing, we're doing.
So, no, we're definitely, we're definitely, we're definitely.
No, it's, no, it's, no.
Take a look. This is the chairman.
What is going to change from the plan that we have? And then we'll take a look at the actual plan, run through PRC and staff comments, of course, and address any questions the board may have relative to the application. The existing property does have a curb cut on Ridge Road, and that is intended to stay. There is an existing, there's this in crane garage which sits behind a duplex building which is on the Ridge Road frontage. That is scheduled to be, to go, to actually be removed. A 2,300 square foot addition is going to be added to the existing main building on the site. And the single-family residence, which is located on Jackson Road, which is currently on the same tax parcel, is going to be subdivided off so that that parcel will be exclusively single-family residential in nature. So as we move on the site itself and take a look. We'll take a look at the prettier picture first. This is what we're going to look like, except for the parking lot won't be blue, but this is the parking area which is shown here. Existing buildings to remain. The 2,300 square foot addition to be located in this area. Single-family residence to be located here. Subdivision line to be located here. Stormwater management facility, which is really to benefit the overall area, is in place. We, of course, right now are at the sketch plan level and concept review, and we will be enhancing some features. We'll be talking about that as we talk about the comments we've received from the agency. But basically, what we're talking about is moving the Limelight Automotive business, which has been a good neighbor over on the north side of Ridge Road, slightly down across the road. Limelight Automotive does, if you will, after purchase type changes to vehicles, if people want car starters, if they want tinting, if they want other accessories. It does not have collision, does not have a body shop, no painting. There's nothing there which is considered to be a high-intensity type of use. The objective and the design has us having five overhead doors and bays which are not facing toward Ridge Road, will be screened from the residential property to the south. There's one drive-through, if you will, bay. But the commitment by Limelight is to keep the doors closed while work is being done. We are actually going to be improving this parking area. The parking area right now, especially the southern part, is pretty rough. This is all going to be appropriately paved. And in addition, we're going to be talking about some pretty substantial screening along the south, as well as a fence which is proposed for that area. I should have done this before, but with us tonight are Steve Smith, who's the Principal of Limelight Engineering, as well as Pete Dorman from Marathon Engineering, who is the engineering consultant for the project. We did receive comments from, well, let me start with one other thing, a couple other things. Basically, this is a low-intensity use in terms of what our expectations are. Expectations are typically, it's like 15 to 20 cars per day, a total of seven employees. It does operate nine to six Monday through Friday and ten to five on Saturdays. Again, it is a use that we think actually coordinates well with the Jiffy Lube use adjacent to us. We did receive project review committee comments. I believe the board has them as well. Those comments are, were for a meeting in February 17. And I'll run through the comments and talk a little bit about them. From a code point of view, community development, Josh has indicated that the property is zoned to MC, medium intensity commercial. This use is typically a use which you could find, there are a lot of automotive uses in the MC, as we know, on the south side of Ridge Road. But it's also a permitted use in the CO district, commercial outdoor district, which basically is limited to the north side of Ridge Road, west of High Mountain Line. There just is not a whole lot of CO zoning. So it's really tough to find a place for it. We will need, as PRC comments point out, we will need a use variance as this is an automotive use. Now, it is not a motor vehicle service station use, but it is an automotive use. So we would be looking for relief from the zoning board for that. This design only really requires a couple of variances. One that we can clearly identify is going to be lot size for the residential portion. There may be some dimensional setbacks as we deal with this rear buffer. And in the rear buffer, actually, we are enhancing the size of the rear buffer. So to that extent, we're becoming more in conformity. There is a sanitary sewer reason to run through the property. We will be analyzing what needs to be done relative to sanitary sewer. We are proposing landscaping and buffering improvements, and we'll be talking about that now. And we'll be really filling those in as we go to preliminary, if we get our variances from the zoning board of appeals. And we are proposing to put back a property line related to the Jiffy Lube property, and that's dealing with the residential unit. The building itself is going to be utilized for offices related to Limelight and the like. It's not a big property right now. So to that extent, that's the intention with the heritage of the building. The fencing is proposed to go in along the rear. As was pointed out at the PRC meeting, there is not a whole lot of commercial outdoor CO zoning. So to that extent, we are looking to be totally in performance with as much as we can in the whole scheme of things. We will be analyzing drainage, of course. We are making some areas which are more or less pervious surface now, more impervious. But certainly, we have a fair amount of land to provide for stormwater management, stormwater management controls. We will provide drainage and landscape plans, maintenance of the sewer line and the like. So all of those factors are going to be addressed. In addition to the PRC comments, this was also taken a look at by the Conservation Board. And they had comments relative to tree mitigation, wetland protection, comprehensive plant alignment, visual impacts, erosion control, environmental protection. None of those are issues for us. They're all things that we can address as we move forward in the process and go to the preliminary approval. So with that, our objective tonight is to get whatever input that we can from the planning board, as is typical for our concept review. Our broader objective is to seek a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals relative to this particular concept plan. And we look forward to moving forward. I don't know, Steve, or Pete, if anything you want to add?
It'd be great.
It'd be great.
He's learning.
That having been said, we welcome any questions the board has. And as we get to questions, I think we're going to involve the guys in the back room.
What's the total number of parking, 14 spaces you have out there?
I believe we have much more than that.
Is there either on scene or 14?
We have 33 proposed.
We have 33 total. You have 14 in one row that's over here. You have 14, you have three, you have five, you have 11.
I agree with what you mentioned. It links very well with the project next door, Jiffy Lube. They're both automotive. The reason that we went with Jiffy Lube, we'll prove that, one of the main reasons, was it was a low impact. It wasn't like what had been proposed here earlier on, you know, the shopping center, a gas station at Woodville, a little mart, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the motor of the gas station.
This, I would guess, is very similar use to, low impact, traffic in and out all day?
Yeah, I'd say we don't do any more or less cars than a Jiffy Lube would.
Catherine, you need Steve to come up? Or then by yourself?
He's got, okay. Will there be any deliveries, truck and trailer, big trucks going down there trying to move around?
Very, very rarely do I receive anything large enough.
Steve, why don't you go ahead? Come right up to him. Can you give us your name?
It's your moment on TV. They already have some word that they want to.
It's a chance to build commercial.
There we go. Go ahead. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
About trucks or?
Yeah, about your name first.
Yeah, I mean, we have a FedEx and, oh, got it, Steven Smith for the record. Sorry. Occasionally, a larger AP wheeler, maybe once or twice a year, have we gotten equipment that's large enough for the need of that. But typically, it's your standard FedEx truck, UPS truck doing deliveries. Yeah, we don't have large equipment. We need to get our tent and our equipment in, but that's above it.
What's you subdivided there, Jerry? The lot that's on Jackson Road?
Uh-huh.
Will that still have access from there to Jackson? No, you're totally isolated.
We won't for the commercial business. It will be solely for the residential context.
Okay, yeah, go on, yeah. So the driveway won't be?
We aren't wrapping it around anything like that.
We don't want access to Jackson like that. Something agree, traffic issue, psychedalite in that corner, and as much as we don't want that, I know you guys don't want that either, so.
I certainly don't see a need for a driveway out to Jackson Road. No low-impact business like this.
Yeah.
But because it was connected, you're subdivening, it was going to run a driveway through that. Variance for the back, what is it, 100-foot buffer or 75-foot buffer? You got?
Yeah, there's a 100-foot buffer. By code, there's a 100-foot buffer. Our existing buffer is about 37 feet. We're proposing to make that 41 feet. In essence, we are, our building is almost 90, is almost 90 feet or 92 feet away. So we're looking to ameliorate the effect of the buffer by putting a vinyl fence along that south line, and we'll talk about landscaping in addition to that.
Are there any neighbors here? You know, and it's not a public hearing tonight, this is just a...
I just want to see what it looks like.
I know, don't even see. But again, it's not a public hearing, but if there's something you want to say, you're more than welcome to.
And the other thing I will say is that we're right across the street where we are, 1183, and just like Steve says, you got UPS, FedEx, that's basically what comes in and out.
I have a question.
Yes?
Why don't you go ahead? Just give us your name and address.
By the way, everyone has Amazon trucks going everywhere, so we're using trucks these days. Where are you going?
Maggie Neal, I'm Sunday at Jackson Heights.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I know you've met my husband.
Yes.
I'm worried about the sound. I know sometimes, like the other day, I could feel a vibration in my house, and sometimes when Webster Interiors gets our delivery, there's a truck up there.
Okay.
And it went for quite a while, and I couldn't see anything. I can't see your building. And I know there's one truck that has a very loud horn.
Okay.
And I've heard that on occasion, and I watch small ones, and I'm like, oh, I hope I'm not going to have the vibration and the noise. But the plan is beautiful, the landscaping, the fence, everything looks great. I'm more worried about the sound.
Okay. So we do audio systems?
That's cool.
And I'm not sure if that's what you're hearing or not. We try to keep things down. The building we're working out of is very thin, walled, if you will, it's all glass around everything, so I'm not sure if that's playing a factor. Again, we want to be as respectful as possible. That's not a large part of what we do for business. So if there's something that I can do in insulating or anything that can help with that, and if it absolutely comes down to it, you know, we have other equipment we can use rather than actually physically hearing the equipment.
That's fine, only concern is that.
Yep, and we want to be as respectful as we are obviously kind of to any of the neighbors. So if there's concerns like that, and if the design team can incorporate anything, I'm ready to.
Thank you.
I generally don't encourage the applicants and neighbors to be talking to each other.
Yeah, that's okay.
This was our neighborhood meeting, so that's all good. It's all good. I'm glad everyone isn't here to talk.
The Conservation Board, there was something they had brought up at their meeting last night, was the fact that the landscape area in the back.
Yep.
And one of them brought up a good point. He said, instead of putting our variety in there, we're not there yet, obviously, but instead of planting regular herbiviti, I guess there's other species of them that take better, less expensive, grow heavier. So I think the landscaping could encourage still improvement for, you know, the Feds and everything else. Okay. Anybody bored? Why did you decide to put the doors, entrance doors, on the rear of the building as covered?
For our own traffic flow business. We're currently, as you guys know, across the street, and the entire frontage of our building is a parking lot that shares the space with the road, essentially. Because of that, I constantly have U-turns going on it. People pull in front of the doors rather than picking a parking spot. And our design for that was to kind of eliminate customers parking in front of doors. The way we're thinking of running the business is to kind of come in, check in with your sales associate. That associate will then do a walk-around in their vehicle and pull it to the back, where then our employees would then grab that off their wall and go and do their job, and then pull back up front. So it was a workflow decision. I am open to designs on that, but if, so I know that Jiffy Lube was another reason for that, associating the building a different way. I just, there's not a good way to twist the building that way and attach it to the original structure. So we played with that a little bit, but this seemed to be the best design, at least, to come in with a sketch, I guess.
Anybody have questions or concerns? I think one of the benefits of it is, again, like you said earlier on, it's compatible with the existing building, and they're really, as far as I can picture in the town of Ridge Road, there isn't any real CO areas that are open or vacant or available.
The CO is mainly for, and this is, you know, just, you fit in with everything. We got a car wash down the street, we got a Jiffy Lube, we're going to have this, and you got, where you are now is still going to maintain and be a service center of some sort. You know, so it fits in a neighborhood. It's low impact, and I think it's the best use I've seen for this particular parcel.
Yeah, we've had a few of them come in too. So I guess we're okay with having him move forward?
Yeah.
And if that's, if that's the case, you guys are right with that?
Yeah.
All right, then what we should do, I'd suggest we do send a letter to the Conservation, or to the, to the planning board, the CBA, recommending our thoughts and feelings. So we'll make a letter up to that, okay? And send it to the CBA for recommendation for it, okay?
All right. Good thing.
All right, I guess we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Listen to this. You're very personal.
You're right.
Sunoco signage located in the corner of Dorset and Tarrin Greenes. The present sign pool replaces 43 square cabinet on existing pole sign with a new 43 square, oh, yeah, square time cabinet. An associated branding, fuel pumps would like to change from Mobile to Sunoco in a 1768 parcel located in the R3 single-family residential district in the forward suburbs.
Yes, sir. My name is Frank Fredlady. I own the gas station with the Chevy Post Office inside. And, yeah, we're looking, we're rebranding from Mobile to Sunoco. And I'm assigned to one of the technicalists who operated to indicate that. So that's what we're here for today, to discuss that.
What is it that you're actually going to change, other than the sign, moving out of the building?
No, in fact, in the, in the, the canopy, cleaning up the garage, redo the parking lot, we should drive with that. The sign stays exactly the same, but we repaint the sign, replacing the upper box, if you know, the Mobile, with the Sunoco box cabinet of the same size. Then the only other difference would be, instead of the letters that I have to lime up there and change, will be electronic. And like I say, pretty much more or less exactly the same as it is, except for the rebranding and cleaning up the whole place, which I have to worry about.
The lights, it looks like the lights are going to be the same ones. Your lights, the canopy, they're underneath the same.
Exactly the same.
I'm going to have a, what's signed on the building?
Nothing on the building changed, nothing. We just cleaned it all up, and, yeah, it's always a tough situation between the United States Post Office and Sunoco, and what? We want you to wear this uniform, we want you to do this sign or whatever, so there's always a balance. But pretty much, nothing's going to be changing, except cleaning it up, and like I said, rebranding the station.
The reason I ask is because if you have a picture, it shows that there's a blue stripe across the facade, just underneath the roof of the building, and there's a sign on the pocket that shows Sunoco Seastore.
Yeah.
It looks like they're using that same blue on the canopy too, on the face of the canopy.
Exactly, it's going to be changing. The color is going to be going to blue. If there will be, if there's no Seastore in there, then we will not be getting any more work to the place. And like I said, we're changing the color scheme.
All right, anybody have questions or concerns? Is the new, is the new pole sign, Sunoco, on the same pipe?
I believe the same pole, existing pole, been utilized, but the cabinet that the Sunoco cabinet replaced in the Mobile cabinet is more or less exactly the same size. And being that we're not 24 hours every start, walking lit up.
By changing the sign, you're going to be able to sign it right up to the, to the Seastore stand. What's the call?
I have one more. What's the question there? It's existing.
The way that the lights are still is not. You're actually correcting what you're saying. If there's going to be a change in signs, if a light is not aligned, signs, they would be brought down to the new code standard.
The way that it reads is a little bit functionally supposed to be.
You know what, that particular spot, you're right, what you're saying, but I think the sign there, we leave it alone, only because if you're dealing with that intersection right there, that sign is right there, you wouldn't be able to see turning the corner.
Well, you're exactly right, that's true. And the other issue is that the snow during the winter, you know, the town plows, they turn around in my parking lot, and those of myself plowing the parking lot. Literally, you know what the winters are like right there. They can get to be almost 10 feet high, where a monument sign, you would not even see it after we're doing just the coverage for most of the winter.
Yeah, I think primarily just the fact that the location of it, right smack on that corner, we blocked that intersection at Seastore, yeah. I, maybe we should just clear it for the record, that we did review it, and maybe it's a good way to add this stance.
Well, that's a good point, and I never even thought about it, whereas so often I try to plow, whereas you don't put too much snow on the corner, because people can't see incoming traffic. Good point that you put a sign like that, there would be a constant blockage of view.
Where the Sunoco is a little white, is there a white shadow too, or white?
It's black, like I said, but it's very, during the day, you wouldn't even know. It's on all the time, but you wouldn't even know that it's on, it's very subtle compared to, you know, the price, the numbers of the price and everything. And like I said, there's a day and a night, it has a night, if you will, and being that we, you know, close probably earlier on the day and night, we're not open, it's going to be off, so, you know, it'll still be lit, but a very gently lit night type of situation, if you know what I mean.
Actually, look at the two sides, the Mobile side has more white on it, and the new side has, you know.
Oh, and all the bulbs working and that, and everything like that.
Yeah.
All right. Want to a secret?
Town West Planning Board considering request by Tarrin Greenes to replace a 43-square-foot cabinet, system pole sign, a new 43-square-foot cabinet, and associated brand new fuel pumps to reflect the change from Mobile to Sunoco on 0.74 acre parcel located in the 420 Ridge Road parcel, having the SPO number 078.182-2. Planning Board classifies the proposed action as a Type 2 action under Section 617.5C9 in the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to approval.
Okay, you have a motion to the side?
Second.
With the second, all in favor, see if they're back.
All right.
So, you have a motion for approval this side?
I'll make a motion to approve the, for the Sunoco sign is located at 420 Ridge Road to replace the 43-square-foot sign and the existing pole, 40 feet square foot sign, also the pole will remain at its current height for traffic control.
You know what, John, to put in there, I actually put the wording in, because the code says it should be changed, but we reviewed it.
All right.
We reviewed it, and the determination was to leave it as is because of not to abdicate the visual view and all. Okay, right, I actually have, we're going to have enough to score.
And also changing the associated branding on the fuel pumps to reflect the change from Mobile, so I asked presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor, see if they're back.
All right.
You're all set.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Take care, everyone.
Don't raise your hands. Do you want to know the funny thing? It'd be so much easier now, because when the prices go up or down, whatever, and hopefully now they all start going down, you know, I'm going to tell the house, oh, it went down two signs. I don't feel like climbing up here to lower it two signs. Now you know, it's easier to keep it more intact. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess with that, we'll set for you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve the, personally.
All in favor?
Hard to drive, oh, man.
Yeah.
Quick night for you, Lon.
Yeah. You too, take care.
Who paid for this?
She does.
You guys didn't start with time on 18 degrees.
I'm going to stop there.
I was going to say, one day, one year.
I'm taking my consideration. I think it's a good one.
Okay, guys, nice to meet you. Let me send messages in.
I still get upset because they still work late.